Yep, let me check with Tony.
Okay.
How's my hair Kendra?
Hello?
Hey, we ready to go?
You're, you're live. I sent you a text message.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, Kyle, we are live. You can go ahead.
All right, I would like to call the Sibley O'Cheaton Board Meeting to order. Due to the continued school closure ordered by the Governor's Office and in accordance with board policy, Sibley O'Cheaton Community School District Board of Directors meetings will take place via video conference. Patrons can view a live stream of the meeting on the SO Media YouTube channel by clicking the link, and that link is on the website. Patrons wishing to participate in the public comment section have two options. You can contact Superintendent Craig via email, and that's at james.craig@thegenerals.org to leave your statement to be read during the five minutes allotted per person during the meeting. You can also call 712-754-3533 at the start of the meeting. A secretary will be available to answer your call, and you will be placed on hold until the public comment agenda item. Patrons will be allowed their five-minute time during public comments in order that the contacts are received. Any questions should be directed to the superintendent at the contact information above. Moving to item two, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion passed unanimously. Moving on to the five school board basics. Number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law and your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Moving down to item three, the consent agenda items. And there were some additional bills that were emailed to you prior to the meeting. And if there are no comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried unanimously. Item number four, visitors, public forum. Would there be anybody either on the phone or submitting anything, Mr. Craig?
I have not received any emails or messages on our Facebook page, and Chrissy is sitting out here, and I do not believe we have received any phone calls. So at this point, I do not have any comments for public forum.
All right. Moving on to item five, administrative reports. To the principals, we'll start with Mr. Janis. I thought I saw him on there.
Yeah, he's not there. He must be muted.
Cory, can you hear us?
Yeah, let's try this again. How's that?
There we go.
Hey, good. Okay, so second round of instructional packets went out April 6th to the 10th. We did have a lot of people kind of do our drive-up and pickup service, which was very helpful. And we did have a few teachers that did distribute the rest of the packets. Just kind of ringing the doorbells and kind of got them to them there. So the online learning or continuous learning from what the governor wants us to call it has been going well with our lower end. Their homeroom. And they've been filling out kind of a log for us, you know what they're discussing. On top of any issues that are happening, you know, whether it be an internet issue, connectivity issue with some of our programs going under run, or just questions in general with how things are going. Earlier today, we had one of our teachers send us an email that was very nice, talking about another district kind of down by where her parents work. And they were actually going to be doing some PD and modeling what we had set up, which I thought was a good thing. That's kind of always good to hear that, you know, we're down there an hour away, we've got some good publicity going. The other thing that I would say is kind of a good thing would be, Mr. Blade, when he jumped over for Heart Campaign back in February, beginning of March there, they raised over $11,000 for the Heart Association. And I thought that was a very worthwhile event. Attendance, PD, stuff like that. Obviously, I don't have anything to report there besides the fact we're not in session. But that's to be about it.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Janis? All right, if not, we'll move to Mr. DeZale.
All right, like Cory said, I didn't put any of the attendance or PD stuff on because we really haven't had that since the last quarter. We're summarizing what's happened and everything. We like to go to the volunteer educational services route, as you all are well aware. And I would agree with what Cory said, as you get older, it's probably been a little less participation. What that means is the upper middle school and the high school, we got going, we adjusted things. But we gave them a recommendation of roughly three days work per week. Now, that's varied by content areas, some are more, some are less. Object that you're in, because some are easier to do that with than others. I do get free assignments in industrial tech. They don't have the tools, you know, as an example. So that's what made that a little challenging, but the teachers are working really hard on that. We've also in the last couple of weeks created contact logs. There's one that's K6 or K8, I don't remember how we broke it up, and then the other one's high school. And then they all got assigned their homeroom students, and then they're trying to make a contact with them. They might not be in their class, but it's who's assigned by homeroom, and then it's either by email or whatever. And then they put on there who they've contacted and then who's responded and who hasn't. So we get a better idea of which students maybe have been looking at things and who haven't. We obviously know at the high school level, the participation rate has been a little bit lower than it has at the other levels. But overall, I've been satisfied with the work that the staff's been putting in. The people that are taking advantage of the opportunities have commented good things to me anyway. So that's kind of where we're at.
All right, anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. DeZale? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to Mr. Craig. Jamie, you're on mute.
Sorry.
There you go.
Here's what I was saying. I just got a message from Arlen Pedley at the paper, and he is at the press. And he's trying to view the meeting and can't get to it. So if we can pause for just a second, I'm going to try to get him there.
All right.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. In my report this month, several different items. First, a huge thank you to our staff. Teachers are doing a great job reaching out and really providing the best curriculum and instruction that we can with the situation that we're in. They're working to improve, they're communicating with students, they're collaborating with each other. And as a staff, I couldn't be prouder of the work that they're doing. One thing that we did look out with a contact log, we've asked the teachers to reach out to their students at least once a week, maintain an office hour at least one hour a day so that parents and students know if they contact the teachers during that time, they'll get an immediate response. Otherwise, they'll get a response within 24 hours of sending a contact to a teacher. So if you read there at the elementary level, we have an 89% engagement level with teachers and students. Grades five through eight is 70% and 47% at the high school, which is kind of what Mr. Janis and Mr. DeZale were explaining earlier. As we get into the older grades, we're seeing that engagement less and less. But overall, in the district, we're at 69%, which is far from ideal. But at the same time, when you look at the logs and all of the teachers have reached out to all of their students to make those connections, I think that's, excuse me, a pretty accurate number for engagement in our programs. So I'm pleased that the teachers have reached out, that there's been communication between our families and our teachers. And that's went really well. Meal program continues to excel. We're getting close to, well, we would have passed 16,000 meals today served since March 17th. So I really want to thank Carol and the food staff or volunteers and bus drivers. They've done a great job there. The CARES Act, the federal stimulus money, schools will be getting a percentage of that relief package to use just about in any way they see fit. There's not a lot of regulation that's coming with that money, but it's estimated at 75% of your Title I A allocation for the current year. So for us, that's around $100,000. We'll be getting more guidance from the Department of Ed as to how we can spend that money in the coming weeks. We do want to share that with us officially closed for the rest of the year, the admin team will meet. Right now, we're scheduled to meet weekly, and we'll meet more if necessary to issue guidance on different aspects. We are allowing projects with signed agreements to continue. And in fact, we're contacting those folks that we do have agreements with to move those things up. If they've got openings in their schedule, we want them to go ahead and come in and get that work done, observing social distancing and making sure that we don't have crews working on top of each other. One of the things that we are concerned about is that with property tax payments suspended, with reduced spending in our economy, we're not sure how our PPL and SAVE funds are going to react to that. And those funds, we get a disbursement of revenue every six months. And so those things run six months behind. So the draw that we just had will be a regular, won't be affected. But the one six months from now, and what we don't know is a year from now and 18 months from now, until the economy starts going again and businesses are open, we don't know how those revenues are going to be affected. So we're going to put off any projects that we had, that we were looking at, that we don't have signed agreements for, until we have a better idea of how that's going to work. So we still have things that we're working on. And as we go along, we'll just wait and see how those are going to work out. Tyler Plots and our custodial staff, they're still coming in, doing a great job working on projects. They've got some bigger things they're going to tackle this summer. We've engaged with Hilliard to get some new products and different things for cleaning and stripping floors and those kind of things. And the process of redoing the hallways, the terrazzo floors in the middle school and high school buildings, it's going to be a process this summer to strip off probably 100 layers of wax that are built up over the years on those floors. So they can do a 10-foot square at a time, and it's an intensive process to get that worked out. So they're going to be able to start some of those projects and still have time to get other things done for the summer and not be as pushed to get done as they were this last summer with construction. So they're going to start working ahead on some projects as well. As far as my goals go, participating in district events, I've been assisting with the food program with health monitoring and then participated in the staff parade. My second goal of communication, we continue to post updates to social media and YouTube. On Twitter, I've been tagging local media, particularly those from Sheldon that are on Twitter for local, for local reach, and they have been liking those posts, retweeting those posts so that we get a little bit of spread there. And then fielding emails from staff, students, and community. As far as finances, I've been attending the ISFIS webinars on what's going on in the legislature commerce and the what-ifs that are coming down the road. So they're really trying to give us some information. One of the big things that comes up is the term across-the-board cut. That comes when the governor gets to the point in the budget where they know they are going to fall short in revenue versus expenses for the year. And if that happens later in the year, then she is required to implement an across-the-board cut. Now, the thing about that is for us, and this just applies to us, we're in a good financial position with our cash, and that's where the across-the-board cut hits. It does not affect our spending authority. So any across-the-board cut would be absorbed in cash, but that doesn't affect our spending authority. So if we have a 10% across-the-board cut like we did several years ago, we could absorb that in our cash and have it not affect the spending authority. So they have given us, and particularly myself as a first-year superintendent, a little bit of calming directive that, you know, it's not going to be as big a deal as you think it is if it would happen. So they're giving us advice on lots of different topics and what-ifs and those catastrophic sort of situations. And again, the current situation, as my goal is to create a five-year budget projection, that's going to be very difficult as we go through the next 12 to 18 months of unknown impact on our budget through the economy and revenue. So we'll just have to stay with it and stay on top of it and see what happens. So that's what I have.
All right, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Craig? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item C, board committees. Mr. Craig?
We had, excuse me, the policy committee is not met. Finance committee met for negotiations to work on support staff wages. Facilities committee is also not met.
All right, moving on to item D, I believe Brannigan is with us, and we have a few things to read on recognition of excellence. So Brannigan, go ahead.
One second, it's coming. There we go. On Saturday, April 18th, 2020, the Iowa Reading Association announced this year's winning recipients of the annual creative writing contest. Several Sibley O'Cheaton students made a strong showing in this year's contest, particularly two students that took top honors. State winners were 10th grade first-place poetry Morgan Gleason with Heart of Glass and 9th grade first-place short story winner JD Brammer with The Number. The first-place winners from the local reading council contest are the entries that are sent on to the state contest. Local contest winners from Sibley O'Cheaton include poetry winners 5th grade first-place Taylor Langstrat with As the Wind Blows and 3rd place Sonya Duskin with 12 Days of Christmas in School. 6th grade poetry winners were 1st place Wyatt Cry with Heather Flower, 2nd place Sari Harms with 12 Days of Christmas, and 3rd place winner Ben Byers with Hunting slash Fishing. Short story include for 2nd place Gabe Beavers with How Bella Came to Be. And then also, I'd like to say that the seniors are putting light bulbs in their outdoor lights to show support for the class of 2020. And we are getting posters made that are going to hang or be like putting stakes in the ground to support our class too. And we would like to thank you guys for turning on the football and the softball field lights to honor our class.
All right, great. Congratulations to those students. Congratulations to the seniors, and thank you, Brannigan, for reading those. Moving on to new business. Item A, consider approval of change in grading policy. Mr. Craig?
And I am going to bring Mr. DeZale in on this conversation as well. With the school closure, we have to figure out what to do with grades for second semester. And school districts have been talking about what to do with this. There's equity issues that have to be addressed. There's considerations of how things will affect grade point average and a lot of different things. So I'm going to have Mr. DeZale read through his information. And if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
All right, we put this in a doc and a PDF on there, so I don't know if you have that up or not to summarize it. But basically, our recommendation, what we've come to as a team, through a lot, a lot of discussions, a lot of meetings between us as administrative team. I know Mr. Craig's had several meetings with the superintendent group. I've had countless ones since this has all happened with the principals group and guidance from the DEA, or excuse me, the DE on this. And kind of what are our goalposts that we can fall between here to do this? And what choices do we have to make? So this is the recommendation for the policy that we have for Sibley O'Cheaton. So I'll just read through it and then try and summarize as we go. After much communication with area principals and superintendents to the Department of Ed and discussion within our own administrative team, we have developed a plan for Sibley O'Cheaton High School students to receive credits and grades for the second semester of the 1920 school year. And the reason I say high schoolers is really 8th grade and below is different. It's about advancing on to the next grade. And your grades, they matter, but they don't follow you from year to year on a transcript. When you're in college, no one looks back at your 5th grade transcript. Not that that wasn't important. So it's the high school criteria that we're looking at here. So what we're recommending is all classes at the 912 level will become pass/fail. And in essence, all 912 students will be given a pass and a credit for the classes they were enrolled in, regardless of where they were at when the school closure happened. Grades then will not be given for any class. So this semester, the second semester of this year, would not factor in on the GPA since there's no A, B, C, D, F grades that are handed out. Credit would then be given for that class and placed on their transcript to show that they've met the requirements for graduation. This year's seniors are an exception to that because if due to this COVID, they didn't... Basically, the DE has said, with seniors, do what you need to do to make them pass. Or excuse me, not pass, graduate here. And then you've got to figure out a plan for your K through 11 students here. So the pass would help them fill the 443 requirement. They're four years in English, science, math, and history. That credit would still fulfill that. Colleges have announced they are accepting that rather, you know, usually you have to have a letter grade. They didn't accept pass/fail, but for this semester, the information we've been told from college universities and the NCA portal is that that would be accepted. And so forth, that why that is placed on there. As well, if students are enrolled in concurrent enrollment or dual enrolled classes, so if they're taking an online college course through NCC. That is still happening, that is still a letter grade. They still need to do the work for that because that is not under the same guidelines as as we fall under. If they're at a concurrent enrolled class, for instance, the only local one we have this semester is Mr. Wedge's College Biology. Where they get college credits for that as well. They had assignments that they were required to do in there to get a grade. Or whatever policy NCC had. So we would follow through with that for credits. So those don't fall under this. This is for local classes. Only at the high school level.
So again, we wanted, we want to reiterate that this this is really based around the whole harmless concept. Students, we aren't going to be able to have students. Recover what they didn't have a chance to take in the first place. They haven't had the first direct instruction on the on the different. Standards and benchmarks that would have been covered in the rest of the semester. And to go back. We're closed, so we can't give grades. And the Department of Education has said, we don't want you to change anything until you're back open again. And where that could be as late as next fall. Or will be as it will be next fall now, though we're closed. All of our books close June thirty. And and we need to be able to move on. So there really isn't an equitable way to go back and and. Work those grades. And then and then next year, we'll have to, we'll have to have staff. Go through and instead of reviewing those topics that students would have learned coming into the news, the new. Standards and benchmarks they would cover, those things are going to have to be incorporated in. And direct instruction will have to be provided. So next fall is going to look much different than anything else, anything we've seen in quite a while. And again, who knows if we're going to be here, but that's a whole nother conversation. So that's our, that's our plan for the second semester. Any questions for Mr. DeZao or myself?
And if I can piggyback on what Mr. Craig said, if if you went the route where they could change grades, you'd have to make that. Equitable access for all students. Service their IEP needs and then it's for all students. So whether or not they were failing or they had an A minus at the time and they wanted to arrange that. To raise the grade, you'd have to do that and it and you can't pick and choose which assignments, tests, etc. Everything opens up for the entire. Semester, there there's just a lot of things that come with that that. You don't consider on the surface. So that that's why we went this route.
And Mr. Craig, can I assume that, this is Kyle, by the way, can I assume that the majority? Of districts, not only in our area, but in the state are doing something very similar?
The majority of districts, the vast majority of districts in the state selected the voluntary route. Again, there were three options. You could do nothing and make up the time you missed. You could do voluntary learning opportunities or required opportunities. In the end, there are a few districts around us that are doing the required route. And some of them are in a different boat that we are with with block scheduling. Some of their students had not seen. Where their classes change every quarter and they only take four classes in a quarter. Those those schools are doing required learning because they were able to, they came to a closure at the end of the third quarter and could give grades. Our our grades run over the course of a semester and so we we don't have a, we don't have a third quarter stop. That students get credit for. It's only at the end of the grading period. So there are schools doing it different ways, but a lot of, a lot of folks are doing it the similar way that. If they, if they are going the required route, if students do any work at all, they're going to pass. There they won't do letter grades. They'll still do pa- still do pass fail, but they won't. If they do anything at all, they're going to get credit for taking the class. So we're really not, we're really not. Losing or gaining anything by going voluntary versus required.
And I would add to that, most. Schools that are on the voluntary route are doing a plan. Like this or similar to it. There's no, I mean, in one way, shape, there's maybe some tweaks here and there between schools, but. There's been a lot of collaboration to get to this point, obviously. So.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
I would make a recommendation that that you approve the policy as stated.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the change in grading policy as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the change in grading policy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign? That motion carries unanimously. Moving to item B, consider approval of twenty twenty graduates.
Mr. DeZao has assembled this list and we, I would recommend that you approve the list provided they meet graduation requirements.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty graduates as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the graduate.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty graduates as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same? That motion carried unanimously. Item C, consider approval of Iowa Association for Educational Purchasing Agreement.
And this is, this is the same agreement that gets, that we've been. I'm sorry, let me start that again. This is the same, this is the agreement that we approve every year to purchase food. And it also allows us, Kendra, correct me if I'm wrong, allows us to purchase paper products and different things from the AEA. It's bids that they send out to get us a better deal as schools. Were there any changes in this from last year that? Would be significant, Kendra?
No, no, it's pretty much the same.
So I would recommend that you approve the agreement as presented.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Iowa Association for Educational Purchasing Agreement as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign? That motion carried unanimously. Item D, consider approval of ma- math curriculum purchase.
And this is, this is on the agenda here with the prices and and different information. We have the, we budget for this yearly. We budget for this yearly, so. So the cost is. A normal thing. But Mr. Genesis is here and can explain about the math curriculum, what it is and what they're, what they're actually looking to purchase. So I'll let him do that.
Okay, so the curriculum cycle that we have here in the district is a rotation. About a six year cycle that we have all of our subjects on currently. We've worked through, we're actually starting the cycle over now. So this is the second time we're looking into math. A lot of these purchase. Prices and things that we get with these publishers, they go for about a six or seven year window. So everything that's included in the purchase is stuff that we get for six years usually. And by that time, we're up to the next cycle that to to look and revamp if we need to. So what we did this year is with the math group, beginning of the year, we had, we met with everybody, the curriculum reps. Are the curriculum leaders in the math groups. That'd be high school all the way down through kindergarten. And we started to look at, you know, how our scores are doing, whether we thought the products that we have were doing good, you know. Was there something better? So we kind of started to look into some things. The seven twelve kind of decided that they liked what they had currently and they were going to stick with that. The elementary wanted to find something a little bit more similar to our ninety minute. Format to where it was more of a little bit more smaller group kind of stuff, more. You know, kind of direct teaching, get them into groups and have a lot of different idea, you know, things for them to do. So as we started to look at some of these publishing companies, they went through a pretty extensive list. I mean, they did. That that lower end group did a lot of checking out blogs, contacting people, asking questions, reading reviews. Doing all that stuff. We had a little framework that they went through. Kind of that we wanted to see. We wanted to find something that had a really strong intervention component because that's something we just don't have for math right now. It's a strong. Solid way to identify these kids in math and yet a process to help them when we intervene. So that was one of the biggest areas. And what we did is we narrowed it down. We started with about ten different groups and we narrowed it down really to about two. We brought these two presenters in, they showed us the samples. And it was hands down that they wanted to go with this into math group. Which ironically is the same company that produces our journeys we re- that we use in reading. So I think they found kind of some similar. The setup was very similar to what they currently use for their reading format, but it's going to be in the math format now as well. So that's what we did. We started to work with them. And the first price they came out with was a hundred and ten thousand. And I about had a coronary when we went through that one and I just said, look, you got to get us below seventy, whatever you got to do. So they changed all the shipping and did some stuff like that and they whittled it down. Basically to the sixty nine thousand that we'll have for the next six years. So. So that's what we have for the math.
And I would recommend approving as presented. If you don't have any questions.
Is that, that's up to sixth grade?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the math curriculum purchase.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the ma- math curriculum purchase as presented for. Sixty nine thousand and some odd dollars for the next six years. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign? That motion carried unanimously. Moving on to item number E, I'm going to let Mr. Craig talk about that.
Yes, so I've been working with an architect and general contractor. To look at that north elementary entrance and our high school. Boys locker rooms, getting the shower towers replaced and and some flooring in there. We were originally thinking this project would be somewhere between fifteen and twenty five thousand dollars. And today we we got the estimate in and it was eighty thousand. So I, I like Cory, had a coronary. I didn't almost, I did. I called the architect and and it was, that was crazy. So anyway. We are not going to take action on that tonight. We're going to look at our options with that. We will try to get that project. Moving forward, I know on the other, on the others, we said we weren't going to continue with anything. Until later, but this is a project that involves safety in the district, particularly with the rec center entrance. We need to, we need to get that completed. So we're, we're going to go back to the drawing board later this week and see what we can do about that.
All right, we will move on to item F, consider approval of sharing agreement for librarian.
We share Lisa Lodi with Harris Lake Park and three days here and two days there. They would like to continue that sharing agreement and that went well for us this year as well. So I would recommend approving that sharing agreement for the twenty twenty. Twenty twenty one school year.
I move to approve that sharing with librarian with Harris Lake Park.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sharing agreement with, for the librarian with Harris Lake Park. Just as we did last year. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign? That motion carried unanimously. Item G, consider approval of sharing agreement for head of maintenance.
The George Little Rock reached out to us about sharing our head of maintenance Tyler Plots and we have negotiated. One day a week with them for next year. I've discussed with Tyler. What that's going to look like and and he is willing to give that a try for next year. These agreements are negotiated annually, so we will, we'll take a look at it as it, as it meets our needs or or doesn't. We we do receive five students for for this sharing agreement. So that's an additional going to be a little over thirty five thousand dollars. And of course, that money runs a year behind, so we won't see it in twenty twenty one. We'll see it in FY twenty two. But again, this agreement is reviewed annually and they would pay one day worth of compensation for Tyler. One of five each week. So I recommend approving the the sharing agreement as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the sharing agreement.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sharing agreement for the head of maintenance with George Little Rock. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign? That motion carried unanimously. Moving on to item H, consider approval of non-certified early retirement application.
Carol Idema put in for, put in her application for early retirement. And I recommend accepting her application with many thanks for all her years of service to the district. Quite a few meals served that Carol's put out both in the O'Chedon buildings when they were still open and for us here. In the district. And she's, she's really come through with her, with her staff here on the, on the serving program. Here the last month or so and will continue to do so. And as we implement the summer food program. This year. So we want to take this opportunity to thank Carol for all her years of service to the district and I recommend approving her. Early retirement application.
How long has she been here?
Kendra, do you remember it was, I think it's forty. I want to say it's forty years.
Wow, I'll check quick. I think it was. Eighty nine or something, but I'll check.
Eighty nine, okay. So then be thirty, it would be thirty one. Nineteen eighty nine, so thirty one years.
Make motion to approve the early retirement of Carol Idema.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the non-certified early retirement application of Carol Idema. With many thanks for many years served to the Sibley O'Chedon School District. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign? That motion carried unanimously. Moving on to item I, consider approval of open enrollment requests.
And this is a student who has moved out of the district that will be open enrolling back in for next year. Will be a second grader, open enrolling in from Okaboji to Sibley O'Chedon. I recommend approving the request.
We'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment request of a student moving into the district from Okaboji. Those are always good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same? That motion carried unanimously. Moving on to item J, consider approval of resignations.
And there are none this month.
All right, move on to item K, notification of transfer.
Ben Chestnut has requested and will be granted a transfer from high, his position as high school assistant wrestling coach. To middle school wrestling coach. to middle school wrestling coach. And according to board policy, it's my responsibility to notify you of internal transfers, and we intend to do that.
All right, for informational purposes only. Let's go to item L, consider approval of new contracts.
And we have one, Mary Zagaski, Family and Consumer Science. She will be a first-year teacher, joining us next year. I recommend approving the new contract.
Where is she from?
So Mary is from Rock Valley, but she's a non-traditional first-year student. So she is going through the Morningside Alternative Teacher Certification Program. It's for, it's for individuals who previously had completed their bachelor's degree, but not in education. And then she just recently completed the, she had a different bachelor's degree. She recently completed her FCS certification. And then you do all your education classes your first year at Morningside, and then you look for employment, basically, and we're offering that. And then your second year, she'll be part of our normal first-year, second-year teacher mentor-mentee program, but then Morningside also observes her a certain number of times each month. And in essence, her student teaching and the completion of her education for education majors completed the first year here.
It really does, to, to add to what Stan said, it, it's one of the strongest mentoring and induction programs there is because the college comes in and observes so often, and provides that through the first year. So they're on contract, but they receive that mentoring, they receive that support, plus what we have for them through the AEA and our own local positions. So it, it's really a, a good situation, and, and we're, we're very excited to have her coming aboard.
And I'll make a motion to approve the new contract.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new contract for the new Family and Consumer Science teacher. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? That motion is carried unanimously. Moving to item seven, additional items. I believe the next meetings are printed there.
Yes, May 18th and June 15th, and, and for now, we'll plan on doing them this way until, until the restrictions are lifted. So we, we will continue to keep the information updated, so folks know how they can get involved in the meeting and can watch the meeting online. So May 18th and June 15th.
All right. Moving on to item eight, talking points. Anything come to mind for the other board members?
Here's one thing I was going to bring up. Where are we at? There's nothing this month on the concession stand at all. I guess, is there anything new with where that is now?
Yeah, I, I need to figure out what we're going to do there, because one, we, we don't have any students to work on the project, and part of the, part of the bids that were submitted, where, where some of the contractors were donating either supplies or services or, or labor, did it under the, with the understanding that the students would be helping, and that was a condition of their donation. So we need to go back and make sure that, how that's going to work now. And, and if that's going to change anyone's bids. So we are, we will continue to work on and, and move that forward, but, but don't have, last month, remember, we had one bid that wasn't firmed up yet. And now hearing Friday that we're officially closed. Now we know we won't have schools, we won't have kids working on the projects. So we need to make sure that nothing's going to change there before we approve it again. And if we need to come back and have a special meeting or something to approve that, we could, if we get that ironed out. Those, those plans are still moving forward. They just got another curveball thrown at them Friday, so.
Do you have a plan on how you're going to, like, communicate with the parents about the grading? Because I think that's been a really huge question that they keep coming to us about.
Right, and, and I've fielded some, some emails and, and a lot of things since Friday. And, and my answer has been, until we brought this to the board, we weren't going to say anything. So we'll, we'll send out updates on this, as we have been through GMC. We'll, we'll have it on our social media. It'll, it'll be sent to the papers. We'll do, we'll do, we'll include it as part of a video update coming out tomorrow. We've got some other things that we need to get out as well. So we'll, we'll send that information out the same way we have been with the other, other, other things we have been.
And like, what about, do all the children have all their stuff out of their lockers and stuff?
No, they don't. And we're going to, we just addressed that today in the admin team meeting. We're going to work on a schedule like the, like the elementary did with the pickup of packets. They drove up curbside, pulled the, told the person outside who it was, they radioed in for the packages and sent them out. We're going to get a system put together so we can get all of the lockers cleaned out, bag up personal items, organize them, and then we'll have another pickup day so that people can drive by, radio in for who it is. We'll get the stuff to them. And then that'll also be a turn-in day for books that kids have at home or any school property that they have. We'll have guidance coming out on laptop turn-in. We've also had the librarians, Deb Rebling talked to me this morning about kids that would have school books, library books checked out, wait for them to turn those in. And so we're going to give all of the all the bus drivers that are going to the food delivery spots in the mornings, we're going to give them boxes so they can start collecting those books. So, so students know they can, they can bring those to the meal delivery sites, and then those books will be delivered to the library and checked in for the kids. Otherwise, we will have a day later in this, later in the spring here, where people will be able to bring their things back to school, drop them off, and receive their belongings in return. So there, it won't be like before where kids were allowed to come in the building and get their things. It, it will be a, it will be a curbside pickup situation.
Any other questions or talking points?
I don't know, not much to talk about. Is there?
I guess, I guess I'd just like to say congratulations to our seniors. I know it's going to be a strange year for them, but, you know, we can recognize them as much as we can. Brannigan mentioned there are some things going on, but just anytime you see one of the seniors, congratulate them. It's going to be a little different this year, but it's still, they are still, they are still graduating, so congratulations to them.
I see they're starting on the playground.
Yeah. Cory, do you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, that's kind of a shock to see, isn't it? I mean, we're still kind of, you know, waiting kind of for this year to wrap up, but we got the window open. We got notified that they were going to be coming the first week of June to install the new playground. So regardless of whether we had school or not, we had to start removing equipment, get it out of there. And then we've still got to clean out all the P rock and get kind of the site leveled for them to come, because they'll start delivering kind of the new playground mid-May. And then, like I said, the first week of June is when they plan to come up here to install. So it looks a little different, a little bare, but it'll start to fill in here in another month and a half.
And we're going to try to repurpose some of that surfacing so that we don't just haul it away.
Anything else?
I want to thank Tony Beavers for sitting in tonight. He's over in the tech office in the library, socially distanced. But he's, he's making sure all of this is working for, for the YouTube stream and for our public. So appreciate him coming in and taking care of that.
And I guess I would like to add a special thank you to Mr. Craig, Mr. DeZao, Mr. Janus, our administrative team, and our teachers. They are, this is uncharted territory, never happened before, and it's great to be a general. I think everybody's working very hard together and doing the best we can with the circumstances that we have in front of us. So thank you to all that are working hard for, still working hard for kids.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You know, that's mine. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Thank you all for attending the meeting. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everybody.